All right, is everybody here? All right, it is four o'clock and we will call the workshop for the city of Kerrville to order for the last time for 2022. Okay, first item on our agenda is the solar eclipse. And who is going to do that?
Our Parks and Recreation Director, Ashley Boyle, is going to lead us off.
All right, thank you.
The light's going to be on or it's going to go off for a second?
They're on for today, but pass out the glasses.
Do we have any public comments, Shelley? Okay, just wanted to make sure. All right, good afternoon, council. So we are very excited to talk about the upcoming solar eclipse for 2023 and 2024. Again, this event is supported by Kerrville 2050, enhancing opportunities for people to gather and recreate too. We didn't plan for that, it just, we're blessed with it, we're in the path, so we're working with what we have. As a reminder, we have the two eclipses. We have the annular on October 14th, which is a Saturday, and then the large event is April 8th, 2024, which is a total solar eclipse on a Monday. We've been very busy planning and preparing for both events. And this presentation this afternoon will be a tag team effort between myself, the chiefs, and Julie Davis with the Kerrville CBB. It's an exciting opportunity for our community and equally exciting tourist opportunity as well. So the 2023 solar eclipse, you'll notice that we've already started to design our logo for it, and that's our 2023 one, and our 2024 one will match that as well. It'll be held on Saturday in October, and because it's going to be on a Saturday, we decided to combine this event with Kerrville River Festival to combine resources and celebrate both events. At this event, we will be including eclipse-type programming and stuff to lead up to the 2024 event and to gain momentum and excitement for that, and to hopefully generate additional tourism. The 2024 event, this is the big one, this is the dark in the park, as we recently coined. Chief Maloney, or Chief McCall, we give credit to the chief for that, for that cute name. So this is the, this is the big one, this is the one where we're expecting a large influx of folks to our community and that we're really preparing for. This is the total totality, we're expecting about four and a half minutes in Kerrville. Eclipse safety glasses definitely need to be worn for this, will be a significant community impact for us, and again, as I said, we'll be celebrating this, we've already started celebrating this now, and we'll continue to do so until the duration of the event. The event will occur on a Monday with a large festival in Louis Hayes Park as a viewing station, and then we'll have viewing stations around in our park system as well. So just a reminder again on the relevance, so we are in the line, the line of totality and the path for both eclipses, one's going east and one's going west for each of the, each of the years. As you recall, you established a planning committee in February of this year, which consists of four chairs, which is myself, the two chiefs, and Julie Davis with the CBB, and we also have a larger committee that we serve with that includes professionals within the community, folks that are interested in the, in the eclipse, and that can offer insight and background and assistance there as well. Due to the large planning effort for these eclipses, the committee has designated a couple of different subcommittees to help us plan. These committees are the Community Education Committee, an Event Planning and Volunteer Committee, and a Tourism and Marketing Committee. And each of these committees has a chair and has their own set of volunteers helping to bring this event together. Emergency management is a separate function and is handled separately by the police chiefs, and you'll receive a report on that in a few minutes. The things that we're considering, we need to plan for the community, so we need to plan for resource distribution, communication, public safety, lodging, getting people here, activities, parking, transportation, staffing, volunteer needs, supplying water, internet, cell service, things like that, making sure we have porta-potties around town on the roads in case we're expecting traffic congestion, we have facilities for people to use, and overall event emergency management. Community Education Subcommittee, so this committee has been busy already engaging the community, they've released press releases, their goal is to raise awareness of the community impact, difference between the two eclipses, and encourage organizers to register for their events. We have a comprehensive list of events, so when the CBB gets called and asked, hey, what do y'all have going on, we have a comprehensive list of events, so we can plan appropriately. And they are attending community events already, and to educate the community on the upcoming eclipses, and developing a solar eclipse kickoff event, which will be held at the library on April 1st. And activities include an inflatable planetarium, speakers, music, and crafts. So they're busy working with the community, getting the school systems, and really just making sure folks are aware of what's coming. The event and activity planning committee, this committee is focusing on the large festival that will be held on 2024 in addition to River Festival in 2023. And so a twist in 2024, like I said, will be adding the eclipse components of it, obviously we will be gearing the event towards the eclipse and celebrating that when it does occur during the day, and having some educational workshops, having some professionals come and speak, and doing a variety of eclipse-themed activities. We've designed and ordered shirts, so those are on their way, and we can go ahead and start wearing these to promote the eclipse and also sell them as well. We have purchased a lot of the solar eclipse glasses to be able to provide safe viewing opportunities for the public, and we'll have those glasses at city facilities, CBB, and areas around town where folks can, can get the merchandise. And the 2023 event, again, it'll be held in Louis Hayes Park, combined with Kerrville River Festival, and combined with the Kerrville Chalk Festival, separate locations but same weekend, to maximize the community resources. We're issuing a RFQ process to work with a professional vendor to help us with the 2023 and 2024 eclipses, and to help produce the event similar to what we do with Kerrville River Festival. They're large festival events, and it takes a lot of bandwidth, and so we are, we'll be issuing a process for that and be moving forward. And then the goal of the April 8th event, like I said, doing lots of fun activity stuff for the eclipses and providing educational information. But here's a potential site map that we're looking at, we're looking at expanding beside, on both sides of Louis Hayes Park, on both sides of the bridge, really having lots of educational components, expanding, getting lots of people in the park, because we're expecting a large influx of folks to the community, and hoping to encourage a lot of folks that will be coming to the park to be able to view it safely and have a safe location to be. This is subjective change. And I will turn it over to Julie Davis to discuss the Tourism and Marketing Subcommittee update.
Hi, thanks for having me here today. As Ashley said, we've been planning and going and blowing, just getting ready for the events coming up, so. Just to update you on some of the things we've done, we've created a website already right now, it's primarily has information, just letting people know that the event is coming. We're collecting data from people that are planning events, so primarily if you go to the site now, it just tells you that we know the eclipse is coming, here's where you can find lodging, and please, if you are planning an event in Kerrville, let us know. We're trying to compile both private and public events, like we learned recently of a wedding that plans to happen, and so just for the chiefs, it'd be good to know when we have the groups of people, whether they're open to the public. So there are two domain names, just because we purchased them both several years ago just to make sure we had them, so KerrvilleEclipse.com and KerrvilleTXEclipse.com, they'll take you to the same place. We worked on logo development, which is the logo you saw, the 2023 and 2024 logos that Ashley showed. There's a social media page, Facebook and Instagram, pretty much that's been used just to promote both eclipses, share information, and just encourage kind of planning and preparation. It's working in conjunction with the other subcommittees, so like when you see the, the photo that she had of rain at a event, that was also on the Facebook page, just to let people know. We're collecting information from the different lodging entities and just sharing that overall. Oh, there's the two joint logos, so one for 2023, one for 2024. At the CBB, we did purchase staff shirts back in the summer, just to start promoting the event around, well, when we go to, when we go to conferences, we wear that on the casual day, but also staff typically wears that every Friday, just trying to kind of remind Kerrville it's coming. I think they're tired of wearing them, but we'll get through it. So it's for both events, but if you look, you can't see on there, it has our name on there, so, but later we'll do some that are more general, just like the other shirts. And then mugs, things of that nature, and then we ordered glasses and have started distributing those at consumer shows. Again, just, that one's more promotional piece, just to encourage people to come here for the eclipse. So we haven't sold them yet, there've been a giveaway, like when we work a booth out of town. So for example, we, we sent them to the Albuquerque Balloon Festival. We normally send like bluebonnet seeds type giveaway, so we gave that as our giveaway instead, and then obviously a brochure in Kerrville, so. Other things we've done, we've worked on press releases, they've been distributed for both events, those have gone outside of Kerrville, again, just making people aware that you can come to Kerrville for both. We've worked on creating an infographic for the promotion of the different Kerrville amenities. I didn't, it wasn't finished yet for me to include in here, but it's one of those that's like, you know, 1,200 hotel rooms, 100 dining establishments, whatever, and so it just wasn't quite done yet, so I didn't want to put it in there, because there were some errors on it, so. There was also an eclipse rack car that we did maybe two years ago, and that's been getting distributed at shows ahead of time. And then we've been coordinating, like I said, with the hotels, short-term rentals, and RV parks. I sent out some communication last week, just trying to get a little pulse from everyone that I think I'll report on the next slide, but, and then like we said, compiling the public and private event information. So hotels and short-term rentals and RV parks, we kind of have all felt and out in, when you talk to the different people in the astronomy world, that the 2023 event won't be as large tourism-wise as 2024, and based on what the lodging properties are seeing, I would say we can probably safely agree with that. They're not seeing higher than usual bookings yet for October 2023. Some of them said they had 50%, some said they had nothing, so I think this far out, it's not crazy, right? Most properties have not opened their 2024 bookings yet, a few have, the ones that have are primarily the short-term rental properties. Some of them, I think, just didn't even know that that event was happening for 2024, so you know the way their calendar is, and someone was like, got it? And then some of them were like, wow, I have a lot of people asking about this date, what's going on? The Conference Center hotels have opened, but only to people who call in, so they were trying to eliminate someone coming in and just booking everything online, and so you have to really want to know and call them. Their preference, they're actually trying to get more groups into their hotels, obviously with group business, you get a little more safety, if you will, on them coming. And then also they are doing packages that include food, so if you, for example, stay at the end of the hills, your room right's going to have all three of your meals, you will pay to park, and then there's a four-night minimum. YO, I believe, is doing something similar. Most of the properties are doing a four-night minimum. I did have a handful, and I mean a really small handful, say a two-night minimum, but the majority were four, and that's STRs and hotels. And we already talked about the Conference Center, and Mo Range is doing something similar as well, where you get the food and all of that, so A, they're, helps them plan for dining, especially in town, if they can include those meals, they know how much food to have on hand ahead of time, but also it helps keep them off the roads a little bit. I was surprised they're charging for parking, so, anyway. And that's even if you, I think if you stay there and you don't stay there. But great responses from everyone, most of them are charging a higher rate, a premium rate, they, I didn't ask for rates, but most replied with something like that, and then I had one property that was charging their regular rates, which, nice. So our next steps, additional press releases throughout the year, obviously, or year and a half, I guess, we'll start increasing more social media posts, we're working with Parks and Rec on that page as well, so that communication committee, the education committee can post things. We're going to order some general sales merchandise out of our special account, and then just keep communicating with everyone, so that's all I have.
Thank you. Thanks, Julie.
Thank you.
Well, good afternoon, council. So I'll give you a little brief update on the emergency management component that we've been working on. So a lot of with the emergency management really builds off the work that they're doing, trying to identify where the different events are going to happen, because that obviously has a pretty large impact with us as far as our response and our planning purposes. So emergency management, just a little bit of a recap, so we'll be a full Level One Activation Emergency Operations Center with myself and Chief McCall as the incident commanders, and so we're going to talk a little bit about the dynamics, how that builds in with the county here in a second. Other staff sections will include the Emergency Management Coordinator, Planning, Logistics, Finance, and Operations. And our key priority areas of what we're looking at is ensure public health and safety, public information related to public safety updates, ensuring citizen and business security, maintaining public order and crowd control, maintaining capacity to respond to police, fire, and EMS incidents, because they will still continue during the eclipse or during how many people we bring here, and then traffic control, of course. So emergency management, one of the things we've really worked on is to produce a duplicate of efforts, a lot of people were asked to serve on both, the city-county, the eclipse is coming through Kirk County, the city of Kerrville too. So we partnered with Kirk County Emergency Management, Dub Thomas, and because a lot of the people that were attending are in both, so K-Pub, Tech Dot, et cetera, so to be mindful. And so we really kind of worked on a joint operations center is what we're going to be hosting, so that will put, as incident commanders, will be myself, Chief McCall, and the Sheriff Leith, that will be the incident commanders overseeing the operations for the city and the county during both events in October of '23 and April of '24. And so determine the stakeholders, so we got together, we had a meeting, we looked at emergency management, of course, it's Kerrville, Kirk County, Texas Department of Emergency Management, law enforcement, we've identified Kerrville Police Department, Kirk County Sheriff's Office, and it's misfocussed on there, Ingram PD, Constables DPS, and Ingram ISD, fires, myself, the Kerrville Fire Department, then the current county volunteer fire departments, medicals, Kerrville Fire Department EMS, Peterson Regional, Franklin Clinic, Raphael Clinic, dispatch would be both law enforcement agencies, and then volunteer organizations too, that would take part in both events in October and April. So what we've done so far, we've developed an organization chart, so biggest thing is to kind of look at the organization chart from the Joint Emergency Operations Center, what that's going to look like, so we have done that development, that identifies some of the key players that will be in the EOC, and also that will be also out in the field during the event. The Incident Action Plan that we're currently working on is going to be based on community lifelines. We can protect the community lifelines in any oper, in any emergency, so that is what keeps the city and the county moving, it helps the transportation, it keeps everyone safe and secure. So safety and security is key, food, water, shelter, health and medical, energy, communications, transportation, then hazardous material, of course, that would be lots of hazardous trash pickup, could imagine, so the porta-pots, there's a lot of other things that we have to watch for the hazardous material. Next step for emergency management, we're going to have monthly meetings in 2023, we had one scheduled for last week, I had to cancel that one, so we're rescheduling for January, and then we'll be every month, and in reality, it's going to move pretty quick, so as far as the number of meetings. And then we're going to prepare the EOC to test the core functions in October 2023. Don't be soft, it's not going to be near the amount of people we're anticipating in April, because it is the annular eclipse, so maybe a 10% population increase for that, but that's an opportunity for us to really test the core functions, see some of the things that we need to put in place, and continue to work toward that, so then if we need to make some adjustments operationally, we can do that going into the April for that. And if you have anything, I guess in the end, Chief?
Thanks, Chief.
Wrapping up, so how can you help or how can the community help, we're getting folks that are interested, and really help us spread the word and awareness, and we do have a committee that's, has a purpose for planning for this, encouragement, registration, and then following us on social media and helping to share and like our posts to get more engagement. And then we'll turn it back over to you for any questions you might have.
Counsel? Anything? You're going to be making those glasses available to the public, is there going to be a fee for that or not?
Yes, so we're looking at selling them to help recruit some of the revenue, and then also providing some, we do have a, a stock that we purchased through the library that will be giving away some of those glasses for free there, and then we're looking at selling them as well.
Okay, do you have a price point for those or not?
We're still evaluating it, it won't be a very large markup, but maybe a couple of dollars.
Okay.
We're sure the county knows this is happening? We don't want to catch them off guard.
And informed.
Where's the funding coming from this? From the city's standpoint, I know there's a lot of marketing that goes involved, and I'm sure y'all are helping with that in terms of funding, but the city's.
Sure, the majority of the funding for this is coming through the hotel motel occupancy tax.
Just want to make sure, thank you.
All right, thank you very much, all of you, and we look forward to this, this is, to have two in two years is just outstanding, I hope.
It will be.
When it's all, all said and done, that's great.
She's not having school that day on the 24 eclipse either.
All right, night-friendly skies.
Good afternoon. See, there we go. I wanted to bring this back to council one more time, and we've talked about it multiple times, Code Review Committee did give a recommendation on the ordinance, you do have a red line in front of you, it's not obviously final draft at this point. Starting off, Kerrville 2050, under the Parks section, 4.8, evaluate the desirability of a night sky ordinance. Again, we talked about this with Code Review Committee a couple years ago, at that time they tabled it to move on to some bigger, bigger ticket items, and then came back to it and have recommended an ordinance, which we'll bring to you next year, 2023. The purpose of the ordinance, obviously to reduce glare and improve nighttime visibility, obviously for safety, attractive outdoor living spaces, and to make our community a better place to live and more inviting place to visit. This is one of the pictures, I think I've talked about, I finally found it on IDA, International Dark Sky Association, the website, showing what glare can do when it comes to just safety. Obviously you can see with the light glaring in your face, you can't see through that gate once you actually block the light and light that immediate area, actually provides better safety than just over lighting things. Encourage efficient controlled lighting to conserve energy and protect adjacent properties from light trespass. Obviously, the example here is a streetlight, I think you all are all aware that K-Pub's streetlights are night sky compatible, so they are full cutoff, the bulb is not visible from a horizontal plane of the fixture, so you don't have a lot of this additional light Other purpose of the ordinance is to restore and preserve the heritage of the dark sky. I've shown this picture before, this is the blackout in the Northeast in 2003, obviously before and after photograph there, how much difference you could see without the city, city beyond with the glow of all the extra, extra light that's put out. We'll also have on the agenda this evening a resolution of support for the city's certification as a dark sky place or dark sky community. The Texas Legislature in 2019 made a amendment to building materials to prohibit cities from restricting lighting, outdoor lighting, unless you were dark sky certified. However, the dark sky certification process requires you to pass an ordinance, so inadvertently caused a roadblock for those cities that were trying to move forward with certification. 2021 legislature did pass a, an amendment to that, that if the council approves a resolution of support moving towards certification, you can then adopt an ordinance to regulate the lighting, and then that path obviously continues. The certification process is generally a multi-year process through International Dark Sky Association, so that won't be anything immediate, but the resolution on the agenda tonight is part of that process. There's a map of light pollution, as you can see, we're kind of on the edge of, edge of that darkness off of the I-35 corridor, and moving west of here, obviously there's a lot less population, as we're all aware, so want to protect that as much as we can. Getting into the actual regulation of the ordinance, it'll be applicable within the city limits, and any new construction, residential and non-residential, will be required to comply. Non-conforming fixtures, so everything existing that is not night sky compatible must be brought into compliance within 10 years, so part of the certification does require that amateurization period. The ordinance before you does have the option for someone to come before council for an extension on that, for whatever circumstances of the council's pleasure at that time. Non-conforming, similar to our zoning classification, that non-conforming structures starts with any kind of vacancy of the property, excluded from that is any property that is actively marketed for sale or lease, and that's comparable to our zoning code for those grandfathered The non-conformity with the vacancy would trigger an update of the lighting, once that building is reoccupied.
So if I have a residential property and I don't do anything to it, I don't replace anything, 10 years from now, I'm a homeowner, and what does that look like?
Then you would be required to update.
Years from now.
Whatever those fixtures look like. Some fixtures, it's just the changing of the bulb, some obviously have to be a new fixture that wouldn't really be able to be modified. Some, like your floodlight style lights, again, the change of the bulb may be the optimum change, or adding a shield to keep it from upward lighting, that sort of thing. Obviously, it'll be part of any building permit that comes in for any outdoor remodel, they'll have to update those lights that are affected. If you're remodeling the front of the house, any outdoor lights on the front would have to be updated, that would not trigger an update on anything in the backyard, unless it's part of that remodel.
How, how will you monitor?
That'd be part of the building permit process.
But for older homes?
Some of it's going to be just as we have, I mean, 10 years is obviously.
Asking people to comply.
Right, quite a bit of time, we'll have public education process, once we get this approved, work through that, through all of our different departments that have impacted that. Any remodels, you know, even if it's an interior remodel, we may include the information, just so they're aware of it. Anytime we get an opportunity to reach out to the customer, we can share that information, only if it's an exterior remodel would we trigger it as a requirement.
I understand you to say that if a house is sold to a different person, then they'll have to comply if.
No, they would not, sorry, non-conforming structures, if they remain vacant for six months, lose that non-conforming status. Once it, once it's reoccupied, then they would have to update the lighting. If it's actively marketed for sale or lease, therefore vacant, that timeframe is paused during that marketing. So if a building was listed for sale or for lease for more than six months, they don't lose their non-conforming status just because they couldn't find a tenant or find a buyer. If it's just empty vacant property, then that would lose the non-conforming status, and then the new, new tenant or new owner would have to come into compliance.
And then to do that, they'll have to get a building permit to install the new light fixtures or whatever is needed to come into compliance.
Right. Just running through the general provisions of the ordinance, didn't want to go through page by page and let, allow the council some time to digest it, since we're just giving it to you, but the specific sections are related to. But the specific sections are related to shielding of lights, the light trespass, outdoor sports facilities, any towers, um, color temperature, service station canopies, general lighting curfew, uh, a total lumen cap for the entire property, um, adaptive controls, flagpoles, and then of course any prohibitions of lighting within that. Uh, just to kind of hit some highlights of each of those. Like I said, some of those, you can see the cartoon images there. Some of it's just a matter of where is the light aimed? If it's just adjusting the light from an outward lighting, just to a down lighting, that would be in compliance. So it would not require any replacement. Shielding can do the same thing, as you can see in that top picture.
Well, Andrew, if you have a, say a porch light, would the roof act as a shield for porch light? Okay. So you wouldn't need to do any kind of modification to a, a light that is shielded by a, a roof?
Right. So when we talk about the shielding, we're talking about, um, full cutoff, which is from the horizontal plane.
Okay.
So if that, if the eve of the house is even or below the light source, that would be adequately shielded.
Okay.
If it's a drop-down light that hangs below the eve, then it would not comply without additional shielding.
Okay.
Something that looks like the top picture up there, right? On the right?
Yes.
Where there's a light under the porch area?
Exactly. Um, I've gotten a lot of questions about service stations. Obviously they are typically 24 hours. And how does safety come into compliant, or come into effect with that? Um, here's some examples, and I've seen some other corporate examples where they've updated their lighting and actually is easier to see both the store, what's going on at the store, both for safety and for marketing. Uh, because you do reduce that glare, because you're not looking at the light bulb anymore. You're lighting up the actual building. Um, the curfew again is just a general shut-off after, I think it's 10:00 PM or one hour after closing. Um, some of the adaptive controls come into play there as well. Uh, if you have grocery store or parking lot that is 24 hours, you can dim those lights so that they're not as bright at night, um, or in the later hours. Um, obviously parking lots are required to be lit, so we can't just take all the lights out. Uh, but trying to prevent the over lighting and light trespass. Um, I think it's kind of the highlights of those different sections. Um, moving forward, again, the resolution is on the agenda this evening for the six o'clock meeting. And in January, we'll bring the ordinance, um, for your consideration. And then again, ongoing, we'll have those community, community education efforts and communicate with local retailers, um, home improvement stores and building supply stores to educate them on what they have stocked. If they have a significant stock of items that are not going to be allowed, um, educate them to start kind of turning over their inventory, so that they're only carrying night sky compliant lights. So ease on the customers and the citizens as they go to any of those home improvement stores. Their options are already in compliance. So. Any questions? So we can go through the ordinance in more detail. Um, really just want to kind of introduce it so that council is aware of it. So when we come in January, we can dig in a little deeper.
Where did we get the template for the ordinance from?
Uh, this is from the Hill Country Alliance. Um, this is the Texel, Texas Model Ordinance. Uh, you see the draft in front of you. It does have some fill-in-the-blank sections. Uh, haven't worked with Mr. Hayes to finish the actual ordinance. Hill Country, Texas Hill Country Alliance adapted that from International Dark Sky Association's model ordinance. So, um, basically came from IDA through Texas Hill Country Alliance to kind of fit within the legislative changes that were made in 2019 and 2021.
A template from a template?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And then customized a little further through code, code review committee.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Counsel, any comments?
Uh, are for the January, are we looking, is this going to be? What, what I'm looking at the presentation, is that a first reading of the ordinance? Or is that going to be a workshop for us to go through the ordinance? Uh, what are we looking at doing in, in January?
Looking at doing first and second reading in January.
Okay. So no workshop for council to discuss?
Unless council wants to dis.
This would be our workshop session.
Yeah.
Well, I know, but this is the first time we've seen it. So usually we have a workshop after we've seen the ordinance. That's why I was asking. But okay. Thank you.
And we can possibly do a workshop before the first reading.
Some of us love workshops.
Not me. I'll do it in a regular meeting.
We're happy to get any feedback you all have between now and that January, uh, 10th meeting. Um, and obviously the, we've highlighted the key policy elements here. Uh, realize you haven't been able to go through the ordinance in its entirety, but, um, we've got about a month. So, uh, if you have any key feedback for us, we'd be happy to take that into account. Um, and then open up the discussion for you all, uh, within the first reading, so y'all can take a look as needed.
As a practical manner, does the ordinance only affect within the city limits or within the ETJ?
Just within the city limits, I believe.
Correct.
So we do have, go ahead.
I'm sorry.
Uh, we have lots of time. Let's make sure if we have questions and such, let's give them to staff, uh, prior to, uh, our next meeting, so that, uh, they've got time to look things over and, uh.
So that was one of my questions. We can consider this to be a draft for us to look at. We're going to see a draft with updates and changes, but for our purposes and what we've requested as far as getting documents in advance, this copy can serve as that document to receive in advance. Before we see the, the, there's not going to be significant changes. It's just going to be specific two pieces that we need to tailor to Kerrville or fill in blanks.
That's correct. And if we have any red line changes, what we'll do is we'll make a clean copy from this. We'll put Kerrville in there where it says your community. We'll make a clean copy. And then any specific red line changes, we'll get that to you. But we didn't, we would not anticipate any major changes from what has been presented here and what has been, uh, recommended by CRC.
And then also just to comment from being a member of code review committee. Um, it was, it was a shift from wanting this to be a set of recommendations to wanting this to be, um, an approval process. And we had a lot of, um, input from members of, um, the Hill Country Alliance, um, to, to kind of answer a lot of questions. And the code review committee is made up of, um, citizens from various, um, backgrounds. We've got some development people, um, smaller development, but that was a concern of mine. Um, because I wanted to make sure that we weren't being over, um, overreaching. Um, but my feedback from those individuals, um, they, they had less concerns than some of the just homeowners that were members of the committee. Um, and, and so that put my mind at ease as far as, you know, because when we're asking for more regulation, um, that always is a concern of mine. But, um, I felt really comfortable with the group that included, you know, engineers, um, or architects, developers, homeowners, um, so that it was a decision made by constituents of different, different backgrounds.
Yeah.
And they wanted to go forward with it as a, as an ordinance.
Well, and I think thanks go to the alliance committee and to the code review committee for, uh, the, their, their work on this. And we appreciate it. So, all right, Drew. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. At this time, we will, uh, we need a motion for moving into executive session. 551.071, 551.072, and 551.087. We have such, uh, well, I can make that motion. Do we have a second? All right. All in favor, raise your right hand. And it is unanimous. So at 4:39, we turn into executive session.